I'm going to call to order this meeting of Tuesday, April 21st, a special meeting. We are fortunate enough to be able to be at La Cumbera Junior High School today where we've all been fed a wonderful meal already by the teen chefs here. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, when our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have Spanish translation available?
Gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Se necesita ayuda traducir, por favor levante la mano. Gracias.
And if there's anybody here that needs a headset for the hearing impaired, we do have that available also. At this time, we will move to item A3, Public Comments. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have Lane Wheeler, and he has two requests in. I'm not sure what the second one is for, Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge three presentations that the Santa Barbara Teachers Association and the Channel Island Service Center, part of the California Teacher Association, made for a former board member and a teacher in our school and one of the local programs. So I'd like to start with Nancy Harder. She is, as you all know, retired board member, and she received the Gold Award, which is the highest award that the local California Teacher Association at the local level can give. And it's for meritorious service to education and teachers and all the certificated staff, and also to the families and community of Santa Barbara. And we were very pleased and proud to honor Nancy. She and her husband Larry attended the dinner event in Ventura last week, and it was great to be able to thank her publicly and acknowledge the great years of service she had. We also gave one to Bill Gurley, who is a teacher at Galleta Valley, for his outstanding service, and also honored the Santa Barbara Symphony's music van and their program and presentation to the schools in Santa Barbara here, and thanked them, and they had two recipients there also. So we were very pleased to make all those awards. And I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly and let you all know, if you mind your Ps and Qs and do the right thing, you too may get the Gold Award.
Thank you.
Mr. Wheeler, what was the second one for?
The IB program at Harding School.
So you would like to make a second public comment on that?
Yeah, if I could, please.
Okay.
Today I was at Harding School and received the first draft of a, or the draft of the intended IB program and reconfiguration of Harding School. And I would just like to publicly acknowledge and thank Brian and Robin for making that presentation. There was a number of questions, as one would expect. There are a number of issues that I believe are bargainable issues, and SBTA will be at the forefront of making sure that those issues are properly bargained, and we look forward to working with the district and making that effort. I believe that the more clarity and the sooner we can get, be informed of those kinds of intentions, the better it'll be. It's, even though it's put off till 2010-11, it seems like a very short process and a short timeline, and we, not that good things happen by taking a lot of time, but certainly we want to make sure we put the proper amount of due diligence into this operation. So thank you very much. We look forward to working with you on it.
All right, moving on to the Consent Agenda B. Any items to pull? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes 4-0. Dr. Noel is ill tonight, and so he will not be joining us for our discussion. And now we get down to the heart of the matter, the conference agenda. This is first reading of several board policy sections. And first up is item C1, the first reading of Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 1312.2, Complaints Concerning Instructional Materials.
Well, this is just the first of our marathon night of board policies. And starting us off in the 1,000 series, Robin Swawski, our Associate Superintendent, will make the presentation. And you're wondering if you have a microphone?
Yeah, I don't.
It does. It's working.
It's on?
It's on.
Now is it on?
Yeah.
Still? Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. This one, as you can see, is out of order. It's one of the 1,000 series that we've already gone through. And Complaints Concerning Instructional Materials, actually, our librarians have been working on this for quite some time, and so we're bringing it forward. Cynthia, Dr. Cynthia White, our Curriculum Director, has also looked through it, and I know you've reviewed it. Do you have questions?
Board members?
Comments?
Can I make just one general question on all of them? Now, is this a brand-new one or revised or, and I guess that goes throughout the whole thing? Have, when they've been revised, is there some notice that it's a revision, or do we just assume that it's been revised and has been approved by?
I, go ahead.
Let me do a general introduction first. We've been going through the process of revising all of our board policies, and when you look at a whole series of policies, like a 5,000 series, 6,000 series, then it's because we've looked at the CSBA, the California School Boards Association, sample policies, and many of them are serious upgrades from what we've seen in the past. Some of them, some of our own policies date back to the 1970s and have not been revised since. In some cases, there have been more recent revisions in 1990s. This is, this is not the case of a general review, though, and I'll let Robin go on with that.
Right. So this one is actually following a CSBA model, and we had something similar a long time ago, and it was not in the 1,000, the Community section, I believe. I don't remember if it was in Instruction, probably. So this is brand-new in that regard.
Okay.
But we're, again, following CSBA's regulations.
And what there was, was not nearly as specific as this, but what you can note when you're going through, because a lot of times, obviously, in the past, we've gotten the old series with it, that you can see with it, but if you look through at the policies, at the back, it will say, for example, here's one that was adopted May 13th. If it doesn't have an adoption date, then you can assume it's either such a large revision that's been given, been given a new number, or it's a new policy that we're adopting.
Yes, that's right.
So, Mrs. Cordero.
I just had a quick question on, excuse me, page 1 of 2 on the AR. In the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down, where it says, "During the investigation of a complaint, the challenged material may remain in use until a final decision has been reached." And I was wondering, what is considered the final decision? Is that the decision by the superintendent or the decision, or an appeal by the board?
That would be, I mean, the final would be after any kind of appeal, and it's a final decision.
Okay. So if the superintendent makes a ruling, but then the parent appeals it, then it won't go into effect until the appeal is decided?
That's my understanding interpretation, till the complete thing is finished.
Okay, then.
Yeah, I don't remember if it actually states that.
I also just wondered.
The board's decision shall be final.
Where it says, "The superintendent or designee shall determine whether a review committee should be convened to review the complaint." Do we have any explanation of what the superintendent will use on which to base a determination?
We don't. Go ahead.
I thought that the, that the AR had some, a little bit further information about that, and so did the exhibit, in the sense that it.
Well, those, the lists of educational philosophy of the district, the professional opinions of the teachers.
Right.
Sorry, I meant the BP, not the AR.
So, I'm sorry, because I understood that to mean or to reflect on what, when, how the superintendent would reach a determination of whether to restrict the material or not. But, so are we assuming that that also applies on whether or not to convene a committee?
I believe so, depending on what the question is, what the material is, if it was clear that we need to do some more research on the, say, a book, and have, excuse me, people voice their opinion or look and research it. I think the superintendent would decide whether they needed to have a, whether he or she.
I guess I wanted to make a distinction between what criteria the superintendent uses to decide the appropriateness of the material, between what criteria the superintendent uses to decide whether or not to convene a committee.
I see.
Well, these are judgment calls, and they're judgment calls based on what we have as our district mission statement, what we have as board focus calls. I mean, we do have some background material on that, and in general, if it were far-reaching, for example, if it was something that was going to affect, you know, all high schools, then I would want broad input on it. And failing satisfactory response, then it would simply be appealed to the board, so the board would have the final. So, so if I made a judgment and didn't involve a committee, then it could simply go to the board.
Dr. White just made a comment, too, that we could add something about the determination of if a textbook or a material was state board-approved, that probably wouldn't go to a committee. It would be based more on what your, our local decision. We could add something like that, if that makes it more clear. I don't know if that helps or not.
It would help, I think, if the point is that, that a committee would not be convened if the superintendent determines that the material is sort of justified and we're not going forward with a review of the material, because, for example, it's state-approved. And then that would, I guess, leave the assumption that if there is some question about it, then a committee would be.
If you have suggested language, is that something that you could provide to?
Certainly, certainly.
Okay. Any other comments on it?
Just a very quick one on the request form.
Mm-hmm.
It, I think it was, it's just maybe a missing word, yeah. We're under the information down underneath where it says Title, Author, Publisher, and then it says Name of School/Classroom Material Was Used. So I think it means Name of School/Classroom in Which Material Was Used? So that's my.
Was that your comment, too, Mrs. Deacon?
No, actually, I just, although I'm on the same page here, I think it might be, for clarity's sake, a good idea to switch questions three and four, because I think question four follows naturally our question two.
I see what you're saying.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Any other comments on 1, 3, 1, 2.2? I just, I know that the board has actually been waiting for this one for about, is it five years now, since that happened? So I'm thrilled that it's coming. That's good. All right, so we have finished with C1. We're moving on to C2, first reading of the remaining 5,000 series, Board Policies and Administrative Regulations.
And Robin Swawski will make this presentation.
Okay, and you see the listing up there? So, again, this is the last section of the 5,000s, which is a rather large, hugely important section, because it's all about students. So I guess we'll go through, I know, Mrs. Parker, you had a way in which you were going through it.
I was trying to compile it, but.
Right. I do have a couple of comments I want to make, and I know we have some people in the room, too. On page 19, the AR and BP of 5141.21, and all of, actually, all of the health care ones, there's asthma management, there's quite a few. The term physician is going to be replaced by authorized healthcare provider. And when we were going through all of these, ed code clearly stated physician, and so we felt like it was very important to keep that in place. But you can see all over the documents, the CCR 600 and 601, those all state that an authorized healthcare provider can be put in there. And that's more typically what happens with many parents. If we had to stand firm with the physician, we'd have children who weren't getting medications, or there'd be different ways of going about it. So those are all going to be replaced, and Barbara knows about that. We're going to do a find and replace, and she also has the documents from the nurses when they reviewed them.
All right, so the nurses have reviewed all the health-related ones?
Yes, yes. Oh, yes, that's one reason why some of these took so long. The nurses did all that, our special ed interim directors, I mean, it's been a long process.
All right, well, we do have public comment on some items in the 5,000 series, so I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and take that comment at this point.
We have three requests. Jane Breckwald, followed by Selena Satterblom, followed by Paul Sherman.
All right, you will have three minutes. If you could go ahead and speak at the microphone.
Good evening. Honorable Chair and members of the board, my name is Jane Breckwald, and I'm the Associate Director of the American Lung Association, the local office here in Santa Barbara. And I'd like to congratulate you on revising your Asthma Board Policy and the Administrative Regulations 5141.23. The American Lung Association has four priorities. One of them is tobacco control, air quality, chronic lung disease, and asthma management. We have been the main provider of asthma education and management in the schools and have worked with your dedicated school nurses for more than 10 years to identify children with asthma and to educate them on their conditions through our Open Airways for Schools Project and our Lungs for Life programs. We also have the annual Asthma Camp that we have every August. Over 10 years ago, the Action on Asthma Coalition was formed. It's composed of health professionals and health educators who represent all the healthcare facilities in Santa Barbara, and the Santa Barbara School District, school nurses are also a really vital part of this group. The policy you're considering tonight is supported by the Action on Asthma Coalition and is of utmost importance to children with asthma and their parents. Asthma has about doubled in the last 20 years. We're not real clear as to why, but we're pretty sure that it's environmental issues. It is the most common cause of school absenteeism due to chronic disease. Potential asthma emergencies, absenteeism, student and teacher productivity, health office visits, and access to life-saving medications are issues that directly relate to asthma. The policy before you tonight is a CSBA gold standard for schools. I'd suggest that you particularly strengthen, or at least be more specific, on the professional development section of this, to specify a minimum annual requirement for training, okay?
Thirty seconds.
And I'd also like to encourage you to utilize.
About 30 seconds.
Okay, to utilize existing resources that the American Lung Association can provide, such as the Winning with Asthma and the Coaches Clipboard Program. So the qualified American Lung Association staff that can help you with this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Selena Satterblom?
Hello, my name is Selena Satterblom, and I'm here to testify as a certified asthma educator and a parent of an asthmatic that will be entering the school district a year from this fall. First, I'd like to praise you for your revision of the asthma management policy and give my support as an asthma educator for the revised policy. That being said, I would like to express my concern regarding the administrative regulation for asthma management. I am particularly concerned about the vagueness of the professional development section. As an asthma educator, I've provided asthma education to many students and parents in the community. In my experience, these students and parents have the knowledge and tools to adequately manage asthma in all settings, including the school setting, but there's often a gap in knowledge between the students and school staff, including teachers and physical education instructors. One particular case that I recall is an asthmatic who was allergic to, had a severe grass allergy, and during physical education class, she was asked to run on the grass. Well, this causes exacerbations, and I think if there is adequate information provided to the physical education instructor about the triggers of asthma, this could have been prevented. And I think that if the necessary, if necessary education was provided to this instructor, this problem could have been avoided. With the help and the support of the American Lung Association, all staff, especially coaches, PE instructors, and trainers, could be given the necessary training for proper asthma management in the schools. I would suggest a revision of the administrative regulation to include information and clarification about what type of training, the amount of training, and how often that the training is required. I believe all these components are necessary in order to provide a sufficient asthma management to ensure the safety of all asthmatic students in your district. Thank you for your consideration and time regarding asthma management in the schools. Not only is this issue important to me as an asthma educator, but as a parent of an asthmatic child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul Sherman, followed by Lane Wheeler.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. This is Paul Sherman. I'm the Director of Respiratory Care at Santa Barbara Cottage Hospital, and I'm also the President of the Action on Asthma Coalition. I'd like to echo the sentiments from Jane and from Selena, and just give you a little bit of, so we do in the hospital, what we see. We do see patients come to the hospital with asthma, and quite often in college, we see them, they come in way later than they should. Sometimes they actually die from asthma, because they don't realize they're having a problem before it's too late, and then their friends and their teachers and stuff don't realize. So it is an issue. One thing we did in the hospital is about 10 years ago, we had a massive education program for all of patients coming to the emergency department, and just by education alone, we decreased the admissions to the ER for asthma by 40 percent. And all we did was, when they came in, we showed them how to use the things they were already using, give them information about their triggers and their symptoms, and how to take care of things. So we know it works at the hospital, and I'm sure it'll work here, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I'd like to call your attention to Board Policy 5141.33. It's the Headlice Policy, particularly the third paragraph, where it says if a student is found with active headlice, blah, blah, blah. The student shall be, the third sentence, "The student shall be allowed to return to school the next day and shall be checked by the nurse or designee before returning to class." I would ask that you would strengthen this policy. While that is a very noble approach, and I understand the loss of ADA, and there's just, this is a real, not a very strict or enforceable policy. Oftentimes, students arrive at school or dropped off at the front office in elementary and are on the playground, are hanging their coat with other kids at chair coats, have dropped a backpack, and by the time the kid gets back into class, the student does, and is redirected to the, the school nurse or the nursing assistant and found to have still active headlice, there's potential for more infestation. This has consequences for other students at the school. It has consequences for employees of the school, both certificated and classified. And if any of you have ever had and experienced the wonders of headlice and the cleaning process, you know how excruciating it is to get this. We oftentimes have families that seem to be frequent flyers with this and have repeating cases of this. There's no addressing of education on this, and it does seem to put students and staff, particularly teachers, at risk in terms of this. I haven't had headlice, I've had scabies, and I contracted it at Children's Center, and it's, it's a very, very humiliating experience, and I would encourage you to do something to strengthen this policy. I appreciate getting students back to school as quickly as possible, but this policy, I think, is deficient in that regard. And I would ask you, on behalf of teachers in this area and all certificated staff, to strengthen this, please.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. All right, so thank you for the input, and we will go ahead and get started. I, I do have the list of numbers for three of us, so what I would like to do is go ahead and start calling, and Mrs. Cordero, if you, when I call a page number, if it's past something that you already have, if you just stop me at that point. And we will take a look at those two sections that were mentioned as we go through also. I don't know if they were, I don't think that they were on anybody's list, but I'm not sure. All right, so let's start in the 5,000 series with page number three. That was Mrs. Deacon.
My question had to do with the word arrest, because I guess I just wanted a point of clarification here, but are designees, designated people on our staff able to actually arrest someone?
I think we should clarify also, as I go through. Page three is AR 5113.1, and that's truancy, the Administrative Regulation on Truancy.
Thank you. Much to our surprise, we also found out that school officials have the authority to arrest. I need to share with you something that is not commonly commented regarding board policies. When we take a look at CSBA language, one of the things that staff is looking at are sections of explanations of each of the sections that eventually appear before you. And so these sections talk about California Code of Regulations, they talk about California Education Code. And so we did not previously know that we had the authority to arrest. It is embedded in this policy. I will share with you that it's not quite as simple as it seems. It would take the cooperation of district attorney's office before we moved in that direction. And at this point, there is no plans to move in that direction.
Thank you. I wasn't sure that was the case, but I was hopeful that there'd be training surrounding this and certainly support, as you suggest, so thank you.
Any others on, just on page three?
Yeah, I had a question on both page one and three. In both pages, it refers to the county program on mediation for truancy, which no longer exists. Is that, do we hope it might come back, or should that be deleted, or is it a truancy mediation program operated by the county's district attorney?
That, again, no longer exists. There's always a possibility it may be brought back. We left the language purposely, but you're correct, at this point, it does not exist.
I just had one comment on this sort of comment question, and that is on, towards the bottom of page three. It says, "The parent guardian of a student classified as a truant shall be notified of the following." And I don't know what our standard is in terms of a timeline for notifying parents.
What you don't, what you do not see before you, and we can submit to you through a board brief, are the truancy letters that are triggered. The first truancy letter, for example, is triggered after three days of truancy, and every three days after that, it triggers another letter. Right now, our procedures call for three letters being sent out, and we can provide you in a board brief those letters.
So when the student information system spits out that a student has been truant for three days, is it within 24 hours that a letter is created? Is it within a week? Is it?
It's more like a week.
Okay. Mr. Herron?
We have one public comment, but I'd like to make it really clear, we've already passed the comments on these sections, and so, you know, we're not going to be taking individual questions on every single one of the policies.
I'll just speak directly to what was just said, directly to what.
You want to make a comment on the 5,000 series?
I want to make a comment on exactly what you just heard in the last five minutes I've been hearing.
You may go ahead and stand up, and this is your three minutes on the 5,000 series.
My name is Kate Smith. My children were the first children in the country to receive a truancy notice. They were in the first and third grade, and it was before the truancy program had been approved. The truancy and parent accountability program has morphed into the school-to-prison pipeline. It has spread throughout the country, and ACLU, NAACP, and Marion Wright Edelman's Children's Defense Fund have called it institutionalized racism and child abuse. You've asked about the truancy letter. What there is, is a denial of rights under color of law. It is systematic and systemic violation of IDEA and ADA, because it is your responsibility, your duty, to be sure that the rights of the children are upheld. If they are truant, if they are failing classes, if they have problems and are struggling in school, by law, you have to find out why. You have to test, diagnose, and treat them for learning disabilities or emotional problems. It's been a long day, and I only have three minutes. I would like to be as brief as possible. There is an educational, political, industrial complex that has gripped Santa Barbara County. There is an unholy alliance between the schools, juvenile justice, law enforcement, and the nonprofits that are feeding at the public funding trough. The school administration has lost sight of the educational mission.
Mrs. Smith, you're tying this into the truancy AR.
Yes, yes. The truancy AR is the problem. I want you to know that I- I want you to know that I have tried to bring this to awareness through the court system, but that's not possible. It has gotten to the point that we are now the center of the universe.
Thirty seconds.
There is criminal activity, there's a workman's comp complaint, a filing, that is fraudulent. There are sex scandals that will be exposed. The DA's children, twin boys, were caught with methamphetamines in the school.
Mrs. Smith, this has nothing to do with the 5,000 series?
No, it has everything to do with the 5,000s.
And your time is now up, so thank you.
It has everything to do, and I'd like to be sure that it is recorded and uploaded.
We're through with this one, and you are all right with the board policy? Page four, which is continuing on with the truancy AR. That's Mrs. Deacon.
Sorry, as a new board member, I know reading these prompts a lot of questions and not necessarily recommendations for changes, but when we say it's recommended that the parent guardian accompany the student to school and attend classes, do we do that regularly, often?
We do do it. It is not done regularly, but it does happen.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to page seven. Mrs. Deacon.
I obviously spent a.
This is Board Policy 5131.63, steroids.
Right. And my only question on this is I know that there's multiple kinds of steroids, and later in the policy, we delineate those as, I guess they're androgenic anabolic steroids. Is it common practice to just use the word steroids as a generic term, even though there may be medications students take that are steroids that do not fall into this category?
I believe so, yes. I mean, that's the common, what it states in the, in the policy here is how it's referred to.
So this is kind of CSBA's language on this, by and large?
Right, and, yeah, beyond CSBA, and just in schools.
Okay, all right. That's fine, thank you.
Anything so far, Mrs. Cordero? Okay. I just had a comment on the AR that accompanies this on page nine, from the steroids. And that is, just past the middle of the page, there's a paragraph that says, "The principal or designee shall ensure that the following warning reproduced in ten-point bold type is posted in every locker room." And I questioned that. I don't know if that's in the Civil Code, that it's ten-point bold, because that's very, very small.
Very small.
And, and so I.
Yeah, I remember when we saw this, and we thought, okay, we better make sure this is in all the locker rooms once this is passed, but I don't remember that it was ten-point. That seems really small as well.
But I believe that's a Civil Code.
So if we could, if we could double check that, because you would, you need a, yes, Mrs. Cordero?
I'm assuming that if it, if it is in Civil Code, that it's ten-point, that it probably says at least ten-point. I can't imagine that they have, that the state has any vested interest in making sure that it's not any larger than ten points.
If we simply omit.
So I assume that, I mean, I think that we could write into our own AR that we wanted it to be larger, because I think ten-point type, that was my question, too. I think ten-point type is way too small to be meaningful, to be a meaningful posting of this information.
I would recommend that we simply replace it with something like large, bold type, or, you know, no matter what you choose, it's going to be larger than ten-point if you're going to post it in the locker room. You could even omit it, it'd be much larger than ten-point.
Okay. Moving on, if there's no other comments on that particular page, page 11 and 12, this is the dress code policy, and Mr. Herron, if you want to start on that?
I was just confused, because on the website, the policy had a revision date of November of '08, which was two months after this one, and there were substantive differences between the two. So I wondered why a November 8th document was in existence when this one is, but Mr. Gonzalez assured me that this is the correct one, and the old one had the dress code guidelines. This says dress code policy, so I presume policy is the right word, and that the major difference in this and what we've seen before is the section on safe shoes.
That is correct. The board requested further definition and information about what constituted safe schools, and this is staff's recommendation for that.
I do know that on the district website, for several weeks, maybe months, you know, it was very proudly pronounced that we have a new dress code. And so it sounds like maybe we didn't really have a new dress code, or wait, do we have one, but now this has been revised, I guess. Yeah, okay.
And I also want to be clear to the public that we took all comments on the entire 5,000 series. This is item C1. So we are not taking comments on individual ones as they come up. You have three minutes to talk about every single one that you were concerned with. My point on 11 and 12 is can we change shoes to footwear?
Hmm.
Safe footwear, I just thought that sounded a little bit better than safe shoes, which sounded just a little bit too targeted. So, and that, for that, would mean number four, safe footwear is required at all times, and then in the asterisk at the end, it would be safe footwear instead of safe shoes. Those are just my comments. Let's see. Then, still in the 5,000 series, moving up to page 41. But wait a second, I want to be sure that we don't, no, let's, let's pass the 5141.23. So let's go to 5141.23, which is asthma management. And, oh, we got some good public comment on that. Board members want to make any comments about it at this point? Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I definitely think that some kind of annual professional development, it would be a good idea. And I don't know if other board members have ideas about how to expand any other kinds of ways to address the comments we heard, but at a minimum, doing this on an annual basis seems like a good idea.
Mrs. Cordero?
I agree. I think that the comments that the public made were, were on point here, and I would, rather than having us as laypeople try to identify what would be the appropriate language, I would rather that either we pull this one specifically and come back to it, or adopt it with the understanding that we will rework, that we will revise the professional development section with the help of some of the professionals in the community to identify what would be the appropriate amount and type of professional development.
We certainly can do that. I actually met with one of our nurses and a member of the, a person from the Lung Association yesterday, and we talked about this in particular. And one of the professional development opportunities that was spoken about tonight is a video, I believe, or an online course, and we talked about having that be a requirement similar to like when you get your notice for TB every four, TB test every four years or something. It could be something that all coaches, all PE teachers, and elementary teachers that actually, I mean, most teachers are involved with PE instruction, as well as some of our teacher, our PE teachers. So we could, we could put something like that in place. We also talked about adding after, where it says the professional development shall be provided by a school nurse or other qualified health professional educator. We added, we wanted to add in community partners because that's, or community agencies, something that, you know, specifically addresses the fact that we have many people in our community that could help with that. We could add, actually, the required annual notification from the personnel or from curriculum, and we, we could make it as strong as you want it to be. And we could ask also community partners. I have met with them, though, and those were the recommendations. I can contact the person again and say, this is what our revised language is. I believe that the nurse that was there, too, or two nurses in particular are particularly active with the group and correspond, we could work with the nurses.
That sounds good to.
Yeah, I, I would ask that we have time to combine a number of trainings. You know, too often, we have standalone trainings, and in the end, there are just so many of them that, that we ignore them, and we take care of some and not others. So we have a number of health needs, this is one. Food allergies is certainly another one. And there are a number in this area that, that we could easily combine, make that an annual training, or every other year training, probably best annual. And I'd like to bring that back, then, to the next meeting.
Great. All right. Now, moving on to page 41, which is AR 5141.27, food allergies, special dietary needs. And page 41, that was Mrs. Deacon.
Well, Dr. Sarves, I like the idea of combining training. So, you know, if we identify other areas that are appropriate to combine, that certainly makes a lot of sense. I guess my question here just was, we know that things like peanut allergies, for instance, are very severe, and we asked the district's food service staff to check food labels to ensure that foods don't contain traces. There are so many products where they are combined. How realistically can we actually make sure students are exposed to these products?
Yeah, we've, I've met with the nurses a lot on this. I know Michael was actually involved in, with a student, a case where the student was extremely allergic and was a very young child, and so educating the child was very difficult because just holding hands with a friend or getting on the bars after someone's eaten a peanut butter sandwich that they brought from home was an issue. So, you know, the cafeteria staff, it's really important, but the teachers and the supervisors and the students and the parents, I mean, everybody's involved in this training. So we do the best job we can, but that's one reason we don't say we are peanut-free, because you really can never guarantee that.
All right.
I don't know if that answers your questions.
No, that's helpful.
But we've had real-life experience with it.
I'm sure you have, and I just wanted some assurance that we can't promise that, that we will ultimately be responsible for, you know, making those, you know, safeguarding those students, per se. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to page 51. This is AR 5141.31, immunizations, and that's Mrs. Deacon.
I think I spent too much time on this.
No, it's good.
Immunizations. I mean, I know this is, it's a particularly hot topic right now. You know, we've seen a lot of epidemics, measles, and things like that, that are a result of some families choosing not to immunize. But my actual question had to do with the immunizations below kindergarten level, where it says children younger than age four, six months, shall have received the Hibminogitis vaccine. But is this not required if they're older? Is that true? The way it's worded, it sounds like younger than age four shall have received this, but what if you're older than that? I'm sorry, we're on page 51 at the very bottom.
Page 51, first bottom.
I'm sorry, I was saying goodbye to our people.
Yeah. And I don't know if this is one that's legally required. I mean, it's, it's required for, it appears for young children, but I just wondered if, if you were older than that, if you needed it as well.
Well, I believe it's one of the things that we check as students come into kindergarten. Of course, we check it when they come into preschool as well. So we need to know simply what the points are. So if we have a four-year-old, no. If we have a five-year-old, yes, we need to check to see that they've, they've had this immunization. And I think that's how we use it.
Okay.
Yes, this was one that the nurses really went through very carefully, so I'm assuming that this follows everything, and it's just kind of saying when you get them. And typically now, that is something that's done at that age level, but we would require it of any student coming in.
So, but it doesn't say that.
I know it doesn't.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering, if a parent was to go to this on the website, it might be confusing about whether the child needed it.
Well, I mean.
If they transferred into the school to a later age.
I mean, the way that I read it is that it's not required for kindergarten because it's not in the K-12 section, that it is, that it is required for preschool.
Right.
So a little clarification on that would be good.
Okay, yeah.
And then, it's on to page 58, Mr. Wheeler's favorite section, BP 5141.33, head lice. And we may have other comments on it, but certainly Mrs. Deacon does. Mrs. Deacon?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was waiting for Mr. Wheeler. Well, I, actually, my concerns were very similar, because it says here, if a student is found with active head lice, the student shall be allowed to return to school the next day, but I wasn't sure if you can actually eradicate head lice overnight. So allowing them to return the next day seems maybe a bit early.
You know, this, maybe Dr. Sarves has something to say about this, but I do know this is one that the nurses, this was one I've been talking to them about for at least, you know, a year or two. This is new, and this is through the county health department as far as what they recommend, but as, as Lane Wheeler said, you really need to make sure that the child entering, you know, you have to go through the office, you have to have the health assistant or someone check immediately. And it's the idea of you can, the little dead knit things can be there. And in the past, you had to be completely knit-free, and that's no longer the case. It's just the live lie. So you really have to have someone who knows what they're doing, check it, and make sure that how he described with the child making contact all along doesn't happen. I think that piece has to be clearly in place.
Right.
Did you have something else?
Well, anyone who's had elementary school experience knows what it is to check for head lice, and actually, you know, we used to require that all the knits be combed out, and that we check for multiple days. Some districts had policies where they just keep kids out of school, even though they had been treated, even though the knits had been combed out. And I believe that this is, this is an attempt to make sure those kids are back in school, that they're treated and back in school right away. And if that language isn't there, I think it should be added.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I just wanted to comment on, I had the same concern that Mr. Wheeler brought up about a lack of any additional education. And I wondered, it said superintendent or designee shall send home the notification required by law for exclude students. The principal and school nurse shall work with the parents of any student, but it doesn't say work with them in what way. It says to minimize the student's absences, but I'm wondering if this could be, if we could strengthen the language about providing some sort of education for parents, educational information that gets sent home, and also maybe even some education for the students.
It does say in paragraph three, "The parent guardian of an excluded student shall receive information about recommended treatment procedures and sources of further information." Um, my, but, do you have suggested language? Or you can think about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And my suggestion here, too, would be that we have something about, the student shall be allowed to return directly to the school office, you know, include language there that's procedurally that they're going straight to the school office and must be checked by the health assistant or a school nurse before they can go to any other location on campus, something along those lines.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And we, we do need to consider the transportation issue also, if they're riding on the bus, but, so something else to think about. That was page 58. Let me see. Moving on to page 60. This is BP 5141.4, child abuse prevention and reporting. And this one is actually my comment, just the very last sentence, "The superintendent or designee shall provide training regarding the reporting duties of mandated reporters." And again, it's how often?
Hmm.
So if there's a reasonable, a reasonable number there that, that can be included, that you, that would be great. Moving on to page 71. This is the AR 5141.6, student health and social services. Mrs. Deacon?
Well, this actually went a long way to explain to me how the Medi-Cal billing works, which, you know, we routinely authorize payment for, so this was helpful. And I noticed that things like speech pathology, psychology, and counseling services are covered under this. We routinely approve payment for these kinds of services. It appears from. We routinely approve payment for these kinds of services, it appears from time to time, I'm assuming that's because those families don't qualify in this category, is that right?
All right, and then on to page seventy-two, the next page of that, also, Mrs. Deacon?
You know what, I, I think I understand my question now, so we can pass on that one, thank you.
Okay, then there's page seventy-eight. This is Board Policy 5144.1, suspension and expulsion due process. And that is, Mrs. Deacon?
We, we actually covered this earlier, it was my question about whether, how often parents actually attend class.
And my question on this one, I actually had made a note on it also, is that we are essentially asking the sites to provide a supervised suspension classroom, and are we providing funding for it?
May I make a comment about that? On behalf of staff, we're going to ask that you delete from consideration tonight, on page seventy-eight, that section that you have pointed out called supervised suspension classroom. Also, in the administrative regulation found on page ninety-two, I'm also going to ask that you delete from consideration supervised suspension classroom. The reasoning behind that, it's come to our attention, that there are some negotiating issues that, surrounding the supervised classrooms that we need to address before we can present this to the board.
Okay, so is it your recommendation that we adopt these without those sections?
Correct.
I, I had a question about the section required parental attendance. Because this section says that we will require parent, we're going to encourage parents to attend voluntarily, but if they don't, we're going to require them to. And I'm wondering how we go about requiring that. Is the child not allowed to attend class until the parent comes?
The, the education code permits us to write a letter and cite a specific education code that informs the parent, and they can take the letter to their employer, that by law, schools have the authority to require the parent to accompany their child. Now, often, there is a delay, they've got to get their, take that letter over to the employers, but that's a very important disciplinary tool that our elementaries, as well as our secondary schools use.
Well, because I'm wondering, what happens if the parent doesn't do it, because it says, the, the regulation says, "District regulations and school site rules for student discipline shall include procedures for implementing parental attendance requirements." But it doesn't say what those procedures are.
Again, the procedures are, we send out from our offices, Student Services, a, a template that the schools can use when they contact us that specifies the education code and the requirement.
I, I understand that part, I'm wondering, I get that letter, I'm a parent, I get that letter, and I simply ignore it, I just don't go. What, what happens?
You know, it's not been our experience, I am sure that there are parents who have refused to attend, and we are not going to hold any disciplinary action against a student because the parent fails to attend. But I will share with you that it's very rare that parents will not cooperate with such a letter.
Okay, well, you just said the magic word to me, I wanted to make sure that we were not disciplining the student for the parent's behavior.
Correct.
Okay, that was page seventy-eight, we're moving now to page eighty-one. This is AR 5144.1, suspension and expulsion due process, so this is the matching AR. And this is just a stylistic thing, there's the whole list of the definitions, the word that's being defined is in italics. And there's one that's underlined, "Student includes a student's parent, guardian, or legal counsel," and student is not italicized. But I think it might also want to have a definition of a, of an actual student besides what it includes, so that's something to consider there. Any other comments on this AR? Moving on then to page eighty-five. And this was just a question for me, we are still in the, this is so long, I'm sorry, it's still in the same AR. And the, at the top of the page, there's a paragraph that says, "Sexual harassment means that, that conduct, when considered from the perspective of a reasonable person of the same gender as the victim, is sufficiently severe or pervasive to have a negative impact." And I just, I guess that I, of the same gender as the victim, there are just some instances where I could see that maybe that isn't the, the standard. That was just a little bit difficult for me.
However, that is the standard that's established in the education code and what we're obligated to follow.
Okay, that answers that.
I had a question on that page, too. And I was, under number twenty, and this actually comes up a little bit in other places, but specifically in twenty, where it's listing the protected classes. Are we free to add additional classes, or do we have to maintain the language that's identified in ed code?
I think that the best way to answer it is that any, any other class that the board would like to include should be run by our legal counsel to make sure that it's legal and appropriate.
I would like to add language, the student's language as a, as a class. We have national origin, race, ancestry, et cetera, but I think sometimes language is an issue as well.
We will research that.
Moving on, it's up to page ninety-four. And this is still part of the same AR. And what did I make in, oh, I, my note on this one was at the very bottom of the page, number two, and, under mandatory recommendation for expulsion. "Possession of any knife is defined in ed code 48915G explosive or other dangerous object of no reasonable use to the student." And I guess, my concern with that is if a student brings, you know, a box cutter to school, and for, for one reason, but then they try to justify it, I had a reasonable use for it, what, how does that work?
The, the existing procedure, and what's also embedded in this AR, is that you must secure the permission of the principal or his designee. Without that permission, you cannot bring such a dangerous object to the school.
That brings up my question, I, I was wondering if we could change the lang, the word reasonable to authorized. Of no authorized use to the student, because that would address what you just said.
Yes.
Of having to have pre-existing permission.
I, I think we can do that, but, but please know that the word reasonable exists within the education code. And we're very careful about suggesting any wording that deviates from that code. But again, we can explore that with council and make sure that it's okay.
What, what kinds of things qualify as no reasonable use? What would be an example?
Well, I'd be more interested in what qualifies as a reasonable use.
Well, I would call that a knife, but...
They're, just, just to, the ed code actually defines what a knife constitutes. But I think I'd like to give you a different example. Many of our campuses conduct civil war ceremonies, where it's not unusual for a, a musket to be brought on campus. That musket must have the approval of the principal before it can be brought on this campus. And so the musket would be of reasonable use, because it's part of an exhibit.
I can think of another example, I was involved in a case where a student had a syringe, and of course, the question was whether the student needed the syringe. And this case, it did turn out to be self-medication that was required, versus another student simply carrying a syringe.
Moving on then, it's up to page one hundred and...